The May 2019 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Gattens?
Here.
Mr. Marx?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Paul Matisse is on his way. He will be here in five minutes. He said to go without him.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone giving testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Is there any remarks? Jack, the attestation and verifications of the postings, please.
Hi, Jack Swinney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton. Do Salome Square, the following properties were posted with the notice of zoning hearing for tonight's hearing. First is Lakeside NEPA, Scranton Pocono Highway, Lafayette Realty, 1400 Lafayette Street, Arsenio Valles, 543-45, Fourth Avenue, and Dennis at 1413-1415 North Sumner Avenue. They were all posted on April 30th, 2019. I have an announcement that the agenda item number three, Arsenio Valles, is continued till next month's hearing. Furthermore, we will be changing the agenda arrangement around to put the Scranton Pocono Highway last so we could get some of the small cases over with first so they don't have to wait around. So therefore, we will call Lafayette Realty, 1400 Lafayette Street, first. Thank you.
Is he going to be given testimony?
Yes, possibly, yes.
Okay. We'll wait till he's...
Well, you could swear him in because I might ask him some questions.
Sure. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Sergio La Halle, 216 North Lincoln Avenue, Scranton, PA 18504.
Thank you.
I'm Attorney Donna DeVita, and I represent the applicant. The official name is 1400 Lafayette Realty LLC. Mr. Elaharde is a principal in that LLC, and it's basically his project, his LLC's project, his pro... project. At this point in time, I've handed up to the board a little folder containing photographs, architectural diagrams, sketches of what the completed building will look like if Miss 1400 Lafayette Realty is granted its request for a variance. And specifically, towards the back of this folder, you will see architectural drawings of the inside of the building. And I think that's probably something that would concern the board at least the most. It is an application for a variance to operate a convenience store in this building. It's a pre-existing building. Many years ago, it had operated as a little neighborhood store. It's been vacant for a number of years, and the owner was not able to sell it immediately. My client came along, thought it would be a good investment. He purchased it with the intention of operating it as merely a convenience store, a deli store. As the architectural drawings indicate, there will be no seating inside. It's basically a grab-and-go. Buy snacks, ice cream, novelties, candy, and the only food that will be made, and I'm saying made, put together, would be deli sandwiches. They're going to have a little counter to do the deli sandwiches. Some will be puree-made if someone's interested in a particular type of sandwich, sub, whatever you want to call it. I think my client would intend that his workers would do that. At this point in time, unless the court wants to hear directly from Mr. Elaharde, as I said, he's here to testify, to make it a little quicker, he intends on employing maximum two employees. These individuals, he already has lined up. They live in the neighborhood, so they'll be able to walk to the deli. So there won't be a concern, at least an immediate concern, for parking for them. As the application indicates, this is on the corner of Lafayette Street and Sumner Avenue in the west side section. My client has no intentions of changing the footprint of the building. As it exists, he's just doing remodeling inside, cleaning it up, and modernizing it as a convenience store, deli, and he's doing some outside work. The side that runs down Sumner Avenue, I think he intends to have that restuck out, no other change. It just needs to be cleaned up and restuck out. The front, there is a picture contained in your package as to how he intends to design the front with some stone. He doesn't want to make it look like a commercial structure. He wants it to fit into the neighborhood. As the application indicates, it's located in an R1A zone, and a variance is required for its use as a convenience deli store. The lot itself is 24.2 feet by 50 feet. The structure that, as it exists, is approximately 700 square feet. As I said, we're not changing the footprint of that at all. It will remain the same. We understand that there's certain criteria that must be met in order for the applicant to receive a variance. Specifically, and I'm taking them somewhat out of order, our zoning ordinance does have an order that this board has to address, but taking them out of order. First thing I'd like to share with the board is my client did not create this building. So the hardship that exists has been pre-existing. We don't know how old the building is. Obviously, he's a new owner, having just purchased it in November of 2018, but the information that he was able to obtain, it's been there a long time. It's been vacant for a long time, but prior to that, people in the neighborhood remember it as a little convenience, you know, corner store. So the hardship was not created by the applicant by constructing this building. The second issue that we have to address is showing that there was unique physical circumstances or conditions of the property, which may include topography. We don't have a problem with the topography. It's just that the size of the lot is extremely small. It was created as such, and the building was placed on that building on such a small lot. The hardship that my client has, the applicant, is it's difficult to convert that into a single-family home. An R1A neighborhood is single-family homes, and to try to make that as a viable project, it would be very difficult due to the small size of that building. He's not adding anything on, or porches, or a second floor, or anything like that. As we stated, the hardship was not created by him. Yes, he did acquire the property, but there's nothing else that anybody could do with it besides tearing it down, and I don't even know what you could do after that. It'd be awfully difficult to construct a home that would meet setback requirements in that particular neighborhood. We believe that the variance, if it were granted, would not alternate the essential character of the neighborhood. And in fact, my client believes that it would benefit the neighborhood. It'll be a walk-up type of store. People in the neighborhood wouldn't have to drive to the Turkey Hill or another grocery store to buy a gallon of milk or whatever they might need. He...it's going to be convenience. That's the point of a convenience store. You kind of walk up on it. And he believes that the neighborhood would benefit from that. He's been there cleaning it up. He had to put a new roof on because there was significant water damage, and that roof would cave in. And he's been approached by numerous neighbors, happy to see that the building is being renovated, happy to hear that it's going to be a convenience store. The last thing I know we should address, his request is for operating hours from six o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock at night. He'd like to get people going off to work who want to grab a cup of coffee and, I don't know, cookies, donuts, whatever might be there, neighbors who might need to come in. He's hoping that maybe there'd be some afternoon traffic, someone looking for sandwiches for lunch, people in the neighborhood, what have you, and then obviously after-work crowd, people coming in and wanting to grab a cup of coffee or a sandwich for dinner on that. As this board knows, there is a school down the street. It is a grade school. There is a crossing guard already on this corner. So even before he bought the building, before he had plans to use this building as a convenience deli, a crossing guard has been located there. He believes that that crossing guard would address any of the school traffic, kids walking to school on that, and recognizes that school, the start time, and the time the children are dismissed is very limited. So it's not like it's going to be an all-day thing that we're going to worry about children walking in the neighborhood or walking past a store that now has a little more, hopefully, not only foot traffic, but possibly people parking there.
I have a question, if I can interrupt you.
Go ahead. I think I kind of touched on what I wanted to touch on, but we certainly will answer whatever questions you have.
Is he applying for a liquor license for this store?
No.
Ever?
No. You have no intention for a...nope. It's neighborhood.
The only concern I have is you have a bar up the street that I know on the weekends is very, very heavy traffic in that area. And my concern right now is you don't have the parking. I know you have the fifteen-minute parking on the side and everything, but I could just foresee with no parking for your store, people just double-parking that intersection too. And that's the only area that I'm concerned about.
And certainly, we can't speak for what people will actually do, but we would anticipate if he closes around nine o'clock, you know, bar traffic may be starting at that point in time. So hopefully, there won't be much of an overlap, if any, of an overlap.
In a perfect world.
In a perfect world, and we understand that. I think Sergio understands that. He's done a lot of investment in the City of Scranton.
Sure he has.
And he believes in Scranton. He thinks that he'll serve the neighborhoods. He hopes to make money on the store. He anticipates that, or else he wouldn't be going into it. And there is going to be an investment on cleaning it up and improving the outside and inside, and certainly, the roof has been an investment. But I understand that. All I can say is people who go there will be in and out. As you said, you noted, there's parking signs on Sumner Avenue stating, you know, fifteen-minute parking. And there's not any seats or chairs. People can't linger.
Sure.
The most that would happen is someone coming in and waiting to have a sandwich made, and probably walking around and hopefully buying chips and what have you on that. That's what he's looking to do. If there were parking, certainly, and we've considered it from all angles, he has an architect that he's retained, and we can't figure out that. It's difficult, but we didn't create the hardship. It's...we're trying to fit into the mix of the neighborhood and what existed there.
His hours are strictly no later than nine? Like, we're not going to find out on Friday nights he decides to stay open till eleven to get the people coming out of the bar that are probably hungry?
Correct. Only till nine p.m.
Okay.
This isn't...I don't think anybody wants, I'm going to say, live there in terms of working until eleven o'clock.
Well, I mean, Mr. Sergio's there to make money, too, so let's call it the way it is, you know?
And certainly. I think his thought process, he shared this with me from the beginning, is to meet the needs of the neighborhood, not people coming out of the bar necessarily. And it's, as I said, I think he has family members who plan on working there. They want to get out and enjoy life at nine o'clock and not be there until eleven o'clock. I think that's a realistic thought. Sergio, would you like to say anything about it? Have I covered everything?
I've covered it all.
Okay, I got to ask you. The testimony I provided, if you were called on to testify, would that be your testimony?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. And we would ask that the court...court, excuse me, that the board, I'm elevating you somewhat here, that the board consider revitalization of the City of Scranton. You have someone here who believes in us and wants to improve the neighborhood, and I understand we have a little issue with parking, but it's a point that the hardship wasn't created by him.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to give testimony on this case? There is not?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Matisse?
Yes.
Chairman Walsh?
Yes. Vote of five to zero. You've been approved. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next case would be Dennis at 1413-1415 North Sumner Avenue. Dennis Disney.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Dennis Rutterwood, 44 Vanderbilt Avenue, Babylon, New York, 11702.
Okay, Jack, I believe we continue this from...
Yes, this has been continued from last month to more or less give him a chance to put together a parking plan that would support the four units. Myself and my assistant, Megan, were over there several times, tried to come up with a plan that would be acceptable to the board. He's going for four units, so we need six spots. And Dennis, I'll let you take it from there.
I drew up a diagram. Can I approach? Please.
Jack, did you say you were over there, too, you say?
Yeah, I was over there twice.
And how many spots did you come up with when you were there?
Well, as it exists today, if you use the main spot, the main parking lot, it's too narrow in order to put the...pull the cars in parallel to the street or even out of 45. So the only way you could use the main parking lot would be to parallel park, not stack, but parallel park. There's plenty of depth to accommodate at least four cars into the main lot. His plan was to put the other two cars up in the top of the property, which is...measures out close, but it's very close, but I feel you could put the two other cars up in the alley if need be.
Jack, when you say not stacked, I'm looking at that diagram. The only reason you're saying not stacked is does there's a gap between them?
Well, yeah, because it would be a parallel parking situation.
How far is the gap between them? I didn't really get a good look at it.
Dennis, how far was it?
It is twenty-five wide, so it would be nine on both sides, so it would be seven feet between the cars.
Can I see that plan?
Jack, you say that rear parking. How is that accessed in the rear? That...there's an alley back there.
Dennis, when you say front property, do you mean on the street, on North Sumner, by front?
North Sumner, where the driveway starts, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, we currently have about seventy...sixty-five feet of blacktop, and then I have another thirty-eight, thirty-seven feet that's grass and gravel that...
Right. And if you remember from last month, he was going to enlarge the parking, existing parking lot, to go deeper, to allow the six cars. Again, we like street parking, parallel parking, not stacking. So the cars in the green, which would be the furthest up from the street, I'm sorry, the cars in the orange would be the furthest up from the street, and they should be able to pull in and out, just like it were a parking meter.
I thought we were under the assumption last time he was going to try to get some professional prints so we can see some actual measurements, and we should have had this prior to this meeting so we could have went and looked at this. Because now we're looking at some squares on a piece of paper that we have really no idea what we're looking at.
I can attest to the measurements as far as the overall diameter of the lot. That's pretty correct as far as my figures are concerned when I went out and measured it. And if you follow it, he's got sixty-five feet plus thirty-seven feet to put three cars in. There's plenty of room there.
So you're saying comfortably, how many cars, Jack?
Three on each side.
Is that taken in consideration, Jack, about an eight-foot sidewalk in the front of it?
Pardon me?
Is that taken in consideration, the eight-foot sidewalk that's in front of it, like from the house?
Yeah, we didn't measure that. And he's going deeper. He's going to remove the fence and go back further, right, Dennis?
Yes.
Yeah.
I had a driveway gentleman from Scranton meet me over there and to...he said he can level the rear area, the additional, almost forty feet by thirty feet, and continue with the blacktop if need be.
So the game plan would be to level the lot out and to extend the lot deeper. And if he does that, I think there's plenty of room for six cars. He doesn't even have to use the spaces up in the alley. Am I correct, Dennis, if I'm not...
Yes, and the spaces on the alley, I know I need nine by...
Eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
Yeah.
The space behind the alley, on the alley, is twelve by forty, so easily accommodates two cars up there. And it's not out here in the street.
Yeah, so that's like...that's like an additional...
So I'm a little bit lost in this. Are they able to pull in off North Sumner and go out the alley? So is there a rear exit out of this parking lot?
No. No. The grade won't allow that.
So there's one in the alley, separate from what we're hearing about right now?
Correct. The alley is a higher grade than the main lot.
How wide is the existing parking lot that's there right now?
Pardon me?
How wide is the existing parking lot?
Well, it's...unless he levels, unless he squares it off, you know, my measurement was thirty, and it kind of like pi...a little bit pie-shaped, and went down to twenty-six.
So we got to take four...
But he probably could square it off, right?
Right, yes.
I mean, you know, you had a contractor up there to...
Yeah, just pull off a little, extend a little, the...
Right, so it would be more...
Pull back some of the landscape.
In other words, it would be square, not pie-shaped.
So you're saying it's thirty feet wide?
Yes.
Did I hear correct?
Yeah.
So we take four feet off of that for the buffer on the left-hand side?
There already is a buffer there, on the one side, and then the other side is his proposed property.
His property, okay.
So there shouldn't be a buffer issue. The thirty should be the net number. So to recap, I think he has the space for six. If he, again, excavates it deeper, like we talked about with his contractor, and then he has at least two spaces that he could use in the alley as an emergency backup, whatever.
Right. I don't know if we should consider the ones in the alley because...
Well, that's your decision. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's illegal to park in an alley. I mean, whether it's enforcing that or curbing.
Well, these would be...they're not in the court. They're...
He'd be on a pad inside.
Yeah, they're off...they're offset. So it's not like they're blocking the alley.
Jack, is this building condemned?
I believe so, yes.
It is condemned.
Yes. So a four unit, it's been condemned for at least a year, right, Dennis?
It was a year in January, yes.
Did you meet with any of your neighbors as far as anything that's going on here?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear them.
Did you meet with any of your neighbors? Because some of your neighbors had concerns about the type of tenant and the goings-on there prior to this place being condemned.
Yeah, I know. I've heard stories that what it was used for before, which was anything from drug dealing to...I even heard stories as much as prostitution. And like I spoke to...when I spoke to you gentlemen last time I was here, I own six properties in Scranton, and I was never before a board. I never got ticketed. I never had police activity. I run a tight ship, and I have zero talents for any of my tenants. Never had an issue with anybody. And it can't...I'm here to do everything that it's not right now.
Is there anybody here in the audience to give testimony on this case? Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Robert Pettenato, 1410 North Sumner Avenue.
Gerald Fabricator, 1401 Church Avenue, Scranton.
Pettenato.
Gerald. Fabricator. Gerald, 1401 Church Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. We're talking about parking. Parking on Sumner Avenue is a nightmare. Come five o'clock at night, you can't find a place to park. So if there's any overflow from this apartment, it's taking up street parking. I know nobody has the right to say you can't park here, but people would like to park in front of their own homes. You're also talking about this lot being leveled out. I don't know if you were aware that this lot is at an incline. It's not a flat lot. And the house behind it, you're saying there's parking up there, but that's to take care of the house that's behind it. And supposedly, it's one apartment, but we believe there's two because somebody's been living in the basement. And when they park their vehicle, they park it in this lot that you're talking about that has enough car...enough space for six cars. Or they're parking it out on the street in front of somebody else's house.
Is that connected? Is that property part of this property that we're talking?
Yes, it is. It's all part of the same property.
That's something that we're not talking about, and that's an issue. There's two separate buildings on this lot.
Right.
And he's purchasing both of them. Well, the upper unit, there's two or three cars with that. And now there's a lower unit that he wants to make four, which could be another six or seven. And I'm not trying to stop progress because I want Scranton to move on, too.
Right.
But the issue is, I'm looking for some parity, some fairness, because if you saw the petition, nobody refused to sign it because we want to try to keep it a neighborhood. Bobby could attest. We live in a nice neighborhood, and we're trying to keep it up, and that's all. We're not looking for seventeen cars in one building, and I'm looking for ways to how to make it better. Well, I have some ideas how to make it better. You know, depending if it goes to two units, I'd like to make sure that it's all family-related because there can't be four or five unrelated people living in the one unit. And what's the difference if you go from four units to three units or two units? And what's the difference if you go from four units to three units, or two units, if they have all these unrelated people and they're charging weekly rents versus monthly rents, like every family typically pays?
But we don't know, that's not what the application's for. We don't know if that's gonna happen. We can't surmise, you know, what's gonna happen there.
The petition is proof, that petition is one square block around the perimeter of the building. It worked from Clearview to Church Avenue, from Lincoln down to Church. Right around the perimeter. And that's it. I don't know what else to say, but I think the petition speaks for itself. And, you know, if it's two units, it'll still be a neighborhood, and that's what we're hoping for, to maintain it as a neighborhood. And not have, oh, another issue is parking. On that road, as you're coming down Church Avenue, half of the right-hand side, there's no parking.
No, Lincoln or Sumner.
On Sumner Avenue. Half of the road, there's no parking. Because it's too narrow.
It's too narrow. You wouldn't be able to get a...
And then you have five or six people with handicap placards. So you take the handicap placards out of the picture, and if you, half the one on the side of the road is out of the picture, I mean, there's not much place to park on that, so...
And possibly it'd be difficult for an emergency vehicle to get through there sometimes?
No way can an emergency vehicle ever make it up the road. That's a fact, that's that.
But that's with or without him, right? That's with or without him being in that house?
I can't hear you.
Is it with or without him in that house?
I mean, that problem's there today. He's not gonna add to that problem, that problem's there today.
Well, if there's more cars, but if there's more cars being parked out on the street, yes, because they're gonna be pushed up that way.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we asked this last time, what would you suggest go to that house?
For what it's worth, you know, we're only heating...
No, I'm asking you, what would you suggest go into that house if this gentleman wasn't to do what he's doing?
What would you suggest to go into that property?
Well, I would like to see families. I like to make sure there's three families going in there, and not four or five unrelated people, and that way it maintains a family unit. Two units, it was originally two units. Somewhere along the line, it got moved to four. I don't know where along the line.
We legally can't tell him who to rent to.
Right.
I mean, that's his right. So, I mean, we can't say you have to put families in there, or you can only rent to two people at a time. That's his prerogative as the owner, just like your prerogative with your house, to do what you want. Our concern tonight is the parking issue.
I guess I come from the old school, but...
I know, I agree with that a lot, so, but...
It's carried on for generations and generations. Some people don't have that, but I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I mean, it's not that I disagree with you a lot, but I mean...
No, I've been in that neighborhood 66 years, I mean...
Me too.
It's a nice neighborhood.
And I own another house in that neighborhood, so...
I am, so...
I hope you're listening, Dennis.
Pardon?
No. I was directing my comment to Dennis. I said I hope he was listening, how important it is. It's so bad, I'm so sorry, I'm so deafened. It's a nice neighborhood. I have that tenant, it's that ring of the sensation.
We understand, we understand. Jack, about this house in the rear?
Yes. It's, all indications, it's a single. I haven't been able to see anybody more than one person in there. Dennis, would you like to address that? Is there, to your, I know you don't own it yet, but is there...
What about the basement?
Please come up to the microphone, come up to the microphone and speak, please.
There's one person living in the house with their two children upstairs, and there is a downstairs, like a studio, that I just recently found out about, and it's a boyfriend, so for some reason, they, as I'm told, that they don't get along. So, one lives downstairs, one lives upstairs. You can't make this stuff up, I don't know.
Are there two kitchens?
No, they don't pay rents separately.
And they both, yeah, so everybody has a game.
They don't pay rents, it's one rental.
Are there two kitchens?
Sorry?
Are there two kitchens?
No. Downstairs is just a bedroom. Or actually, a room, there's not even, I don't even think there's a bathroom down there. They just, apparently just don't get along.
But it's a single-family home?
Single-family home.
That's, yeah, that's the best to my knowledge as well.
Is that one condemned?
No.
No.
The only reason why the main house was condemned was because the, well, the current owner, the heat went out. And he never addressed it. They had people going in and out, unsavory element apparently, and the guys eventually just shut it down.
It sounds like you're a little tight on some parking, especially with this rear house. These gentlemen said it was always a three-unit building. Would you be interested in maybe doing a three-unit building on that property?
It would, it wouldn't be worth me picking it up. I mean, I'm doing everything that isn't right now. There's two cars at the top of the hill, there's two spots, that's the top of the hill, and as far as if I do take over the property, there'll be one car per unit. For four units, there's four electrical utility boxes, there's four bathrooms, there's four kitchens, it's a four-unit.
The statement you just made, that you can't guarantee there's gonna be one car per unit?
Oh, no, I can guarantee that.
So if I was gonna rent there with my wife, and we both had a car, I couldn't rent off you?
No, I would not rent to you, no, I would.
Wow, okay.
I know those, I know the problem with the parking on North Sumner Avenue with the handicap, handicappable stickers and stuff, and...
Excuse me, Dennis, do you have a property manager for the property?
Yes, I do. I live in New York, I...
So you have someone local to operate?
Yes, someone's there to watch the property pretty tightly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for the record...
Just come up to the microphone, sir, please.
I'm sorry, just for the record, how many unrelated people could live in an apartment?
Four.
Four. Well, then, I think that's, you know, so if there's three apartments, he could have 12 unrelated people living there, with possibly 12 vehicles, if they're obviously unrelated, they all have a vehicle. I mean, in this day and age, everybody has vehicles, I mean, and if they're all unrelated, I'm assuming they probably will all pay the rent separately. So I'm a little concerned, because, see, I, on Church Avenue, a man did the same thing. And now we have nothing, you know, people coming out of Waymart and other places, and it's a direct link to that, and we're having a lot of trouble with this one particular unit, where there's caseworkers in there all the time, and the police are there all the time. And as long as there's no supervision, these people can go unattended. So I'm concerned about the unrelatedness versus the family unit. And that's an issue, so, and I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to give testimony on this case?
In the back, excuse me. From the retaining wall to that fence, how far is that?
The retaining wall's running this way, the wall's running this way?
No, the retaining, in the alley, you have a retaining wall there? Am I...
I don't...
Yes, that's what I'm seeing. And then you have a space where the hemlock tree is sitting, to the fence. How deep is that space that's in between it?
Off the road, it's 12 feet. That's the question you're asking.
No, what I'm asking you is how far from the retaining wall to the fence?
Could you show me the picture, I'd give you an idea?
I'm talking about this whole line?
No, that picture right there.
Just look for the space between the wallets here and that chain link fence. You can see if I can run. So in other words, that fence to that retaining wallet sits back?
I'm gonna say it's about 30 feet.
Wouldn't it be wise to maybe make that longer, so that you could park head-on into there? And that would eliminate most of your problems.
Right to the end.
From the fence to the alley, you...
He's gonna be up there anyway, to go and...
Right, but what I'm saying is, you only have two vehicles there. You could possibly fit three vehicles and even a fourth if it was necessary. And park head-on, is what I'm getting at. And you have parking for eight.
Possibly make that a condition?
Is this part of the...
Yes.
Is this part of the property?
Yes.
That's the upper end. Yeah, that's part of it. And that's not the use in the picture?
No. I believe it is.
Is it?
No.
That's the, that's the one in there.
That's the two in the back.
All right, so when we look at this picture?
Okay.
The two on the top?
Yes.
Are they in the initial incline, or are they what would be here?
No, this is the alley.
Nothing here is being counted?
No, this is the...
So is this gonna be part of your property?
That's the two spots. Single-family property?
Right.
At the top of the alley, and this is the 12 by 40.
This would be part of the property you're purchasing?
Yeah, it's one unit.
And it's...
It's two units on one property.
But this space hasn't been included as an auxiliary spot or anything?
That's the two spots up there.
No, we're saying it's not.
It's not.
You're saying you're getting all six of these spots on the incline?
On the incline.
On here?
No, so it's actually eight parking spots.
If you get two more here.
If I get two more, then yes.
Okay.
As I understand, when the previous owner bought the property, he bought the adjoining house next to it, and knocked it down to accommodate the parking for the four unit.
Have you ever tried to open up a condemned house before?
Yes, I have.
You have? So you know?
It's not fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, when I did open up the condemned house, I had the gentleman come, and I went along with everyone in there inspecting. And afterwards, they inspected, and everything is always the way it should've been, if not more.
Jack, I have a question right now. We're looking at the photo of the driveway there, and it has a wall on the left-hand side. Is that the property line?
The wall, yes.
So there's no buffer then?
Wait, no, Dennis, how far does the property line go over, there's a...
I think the retaining wall that was built by the current owner is right on the property.
So you have to pull four feet?
So that is the property line? It's not the landscaped area on the other side of the wall?
You know, it's funny you ask that, because the gentleman...
I was under the assumption that it's...
Yeah, actually, I think that is actually the property line, only because the new owners next to me, they bought the house that was condemned, and he had asked me permission to do some landscaping on that four or five-foot area.
My understanding, Bob, is that the property line is on the other side of that stone wall. There's a little bit of landscaping, I think there's some mulch there. And I believe there is a marker, if you go back farther, that would support that. But my understanding, when I was up there looking at it, that the wall wasn't necessarily the property line, it was on the other side of the wall.
Is that wall on your property?
And again, it...
For the neighbors?
I'm sorry?
Is the wall on your property or the neighbors?
No, my property.
It's on your property?
Yes.
But it retains theirs?
Yes.
And is that correct in your mind, Dennis?
That's what I understand.
Yeah, okay. That's the way I understood it.
Well, we're not 100% sure, though.
No, no.
I'd want more clarification, because losing that four feet changes the width of that driveway, don't you?
But on the other side, sir, the, when the driveway, when the gentleman came to measure the driveway, we could pick up that other area on the other side, if we cut back on some of the landscaping.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of room there, so if you needed to do that, he's right.
Because he measured four foot into the, into the landscape, where he could enlarge it.
I see that.
And this is, this is him.
That rear house, do you ever plan on making that, I mean, since you have a semi-studio apartment, as your testimony down there, do you ever plan on making that into a studio apartment?
No, I'm gonna...
Single house?
No, it's gonna stay a single-family.
Okay.
Like I said, the only reason why he's down there, because he doesn't get along with the wife and the kids.
That'd be the first one's a eviction.
Yeah, in a perfect world, right?
Okay.
My concern is, no, a few different things here. Number one, if you pave that, or where you save from, the top of the hill down, you're gonna have a lot of rock coming out of that drive. Across the street from, directly across the street from them two homes, from your home, are homes that don't quite even make the road. All that water's gonna come rushing down, and off the road, and be right in that person's groin, you're like... I have a big concern with that. And I've seen, because of the steepness of that driveway, like I said, you're not gonna be able to control that water, it's not gonna happen. You put a drain somewhere, that's one thing, but you're not gonna stop the water from coming down and going out into the road, which is eventually gonna make its way right into the two properties right across the street. It's just so, so much water collect coming down that driveway.
I don't think I'd have to take away all that grass if I did do that. But you would...
But you don't have to take it all away, but if you're gonna have parking for three vehicles, one in front of another, you're gonna have, what, 40 feet, 50 feet?
Well, it's what it is now, 65 feet.
Right.
I didn't build that, I had nothing to do with that.
I understand what you're saying, but once again, you do anything to that, you're creating a number hazard, and that's just how that people life.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Mr. Marx?
No.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Palmetessa?
No.
Chairman Walsh?
Yes. Voted 4 to 1, you've been denied.
Jack, before we call up the next case, I just wanna, I know there's a lot of people here for this case, and I don't want any screaming or yelling from the audience. Everybody's gonna have a chance to get up here and speak, so let's, please, please keep it quiet till it's your turn to come up and speak, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next case, Lakeside NEPA, 125 Scranton, Okonoh Highway.
Jack, for clarification, are we picking up where we left off? We heard testimony from the applicant at the last meeting. Are we picking up with the testimony from the...
I believe so.
Yes, we're picking up from where we left off.
Okay. So the testimony from the applicant has been taken care of as of right now?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear... They may have more testimony, yeah.
Right, but we're gonna pick up with the other side's testimony, I guess we'll call it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. There may be more testimony from the applicant.
Sure.
I guarantee it.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Apologize for the error, or lack thereof. I believe we're ready, Mr. Jones?
I think before we start, Mr. Barrett had an objection, comment, whatever we wanna call it, regarding special exception versus variance.
Yes, good evening, my name is Matt Barrett, and I'm here on behalf of the Okonoh Neighbor Association. And the latest place on the American American Association is already taking this under advisement, and I wanted to comment on that earlier proceeding. I would view the position of Okonoh Neighbor Association that because the device in the property was granted in variance in 1986, that the property chooser, as this application should proceed, would also be a variance as opposed to a special exception. The application that's been filed sees a special, a special exception. We do that to the inherer. I'm going to submit an actual remark to the record. Letter, page 2, to Mr. Penatar, letter, page 5, to Mr. Penatar. Case copies of the cases, which I submitted to him. They are pending to the matter, case of Court of Common Pleas. Pending to the matter, case of the Commonwealth Court. The case of police versus the zoning area for different, also no mark. And I think it's our report right now, I wanna say, I think that the... I want to say, I think that the variance made part of it, I mean, certain type of variance made part of the record.
It was.
But I don't believe that.
It was submitted at the first hearing, I believe.
I have a copy of the transcript, I don't believe that was...
Okay, well, it was at least mentioned and dated.
So now the whole thing's on hold. I'll hand up those documents to make sure I include the variance as part of this as well.
If I can, just to address that, I'm taking it that the solicitor may address it, that this is considered a motion, it's not considered evidence for the purposes of the record?
Correct.
All right. And in regard to any of the documents that are not in the record, I would have objection, especially to a purported variance that I have not had an opportunity to review or navigate or anything else.
All right.
They may have testimony on it, so that's...
Well, let's get through this right away. The Mr. Barrett by letter to me, and I think he referred to them May 2nd and May 5th, submitted that there should be a variance as opposed to a special exception. Notice was given to the opposing party. I did my research and I made a ruling, which I put in writing yesterday, and I'm going to read it into the record, just so that there's no mistake. My ruling was that the 1993 Scranton ordinance defines non-conforming use as a use whether of land or of structure which does not comply with the applicable use provisions of this ordinance or amendments thereto or hereinafter enacted, where such use was lawfully in existence prior to the enactment of this ordinance or applicable amendment. In the Scales case, which Mr. Barrett cited, it states a pre-existing non-conforming use arises when a lawful existing use is subsequently barred by change in the zoning ordinance. It further states it must be shown that the nonconformity came into existence legally and predated a change in zoning that rendered it non-conforming. My decision was that the case at hand clearly fits the definition of non-conforming use in the Scranton ordinance. The use of the property made in 1993, when our ordinance was passed, clearly does not comply with the provisions of the 1993 ordinance, that being an R1 zone. Furthermore, such use was lawfully in existence prior to the enactment of the 1993 ordinance by reason of the 1986 variance, which therefore made it a lawful use. The definition does not distinguish between lawfully existing use by use or by prior variance. I find nothing in the Scales case to say otherwise. In fact, it fits the criteria of the Scales case in that the use was lawfully existing and predated the 1993 ordinance that rendered it non-conforming. Therefore, my ruling at the April zoning hearing stands, and a special exception request is the proper venue.
And I appreciate that. Obviously, our position would be that it could never have been non-conform given the variance that was granted and therefore land even beyond the doctrine of 1993 ordinance. But I understand the solicitor's ruling and Mr. Jones's point. We would be offering testimony on that issue, but in light of that ruling, we obviously want to do so, but we have the entitlement to pursue that final question. And certainly, we take the position that the applicant would need to present evidence for his hardship and all the other requirements for a variance in order to go permit use by way of variance to a different use. But in light of the ruling, we would include it for all of that testimony.
And they rest in their point. Attorney Penatar did not, in any means, limit the testimony. This is the night, they have evidence that they want to put on that particular issue. So be it, but in light of that, I have an objection. A lot of this focuses upon a 1986 purported variance. And what you require to do is to prove, one, that Geisinger keeping that and then applies to the property. So if they want to offer evidence, they're miscatering what Attorney Penatar said. He has ruled that it's a non-conforming use. Additionally, at the planning commission, it was brought out that the zoning officer back in February concluded it was a non-conforming use. Nowhere in the record is a particular document that even says variance. That's not in the evidence before you, you're a quays on judicial order. And Attorney Penatar did not restrict any testimony with regard to that. So if they have it, let them produce it in light of the earth itself. Doesn't mean his legal conclusion is incorrect. It just means they're allowed to present evidence. He wants you to say you can't. Let them have it, he's got it. And I don't think you can prove it. That's my opinion.
Well, Mr. Penatar, you were saying that you...
What do we prove it?
It is your end of the day.
I've already ruled on it. So we're going to proceed as a special exception, period.
Yes. But you haven't precluded any testimony with regard to the veracity or authenticity of a purported 1986 document that may or may not exist.
My ruling is based on a 1986 variance.
Based upon the variance that I provided, not the way that I provided to the solicitor which I included to you on the...
Yes, and that's why when I started, I said, that's not evidence, that's not in the record. We go to the court, the court's going to say, that's not in the evidence. And they're going to... You're trying to make it precluded.
No.
I'm actually wanting you to allow me to present. And you said, hey...
You can... I mean, we have the 1986 variance in our records.
I can ask that to the court of record if you have the 1986 variance.
And it's not the lawsuit in evidence, and I have an objection on that.
I'm asking that you offer the evidence.
And my objection, if I can, is it has to be authenticated. I can show also the document from 1990. It doesn't mean that it's whatever it is. Like I say, you already ruled two days ago, doesn't mean that you did. There has to be authenticity with regard to that particular document because it binds my client's rights. So he is going to have to show a chain of custody from 1986. We have the zoning officer who properly ruled this is a non-conforming use because he went up there, he looked at the use, he made his determination back in February. No appeals from what he did. Additionally, this was not put into the record. Mr. Stanley would be able to object it. Anybody can discuss, inferentially, I can even ask hypotheticals on it. It doesn't preclude them from trying to do it because they can't prove a chain of custody that binds this particular property. It's not even the original. It appears to be a photocopy. And when you're the zoning board, you know with regard to it, it appears somebody took an application and maybe not added something to the bottom. No findings of fact, no conclusions of law. With regards to that, not a decision under Title 42. You're under the judicial code, Title 42, 55, 21. That's not a decision. They can't get it in, and the court's not going to allow it. Mr. Penatar didn't preclude them from trying to authenticate that. And my objection, and I raised it, the planning commission is not the findings of fact, it's not the conclusions of law, it's not the decision of your predecessors. You make decisions all the time, the chairman, and I know you've all punished your met in different capacities. You sign it, you know what the decisions are. That is not a decision by the zoning committee. So if they want to offer testimony, I have no objection to them doing it. Attorney Penatar didn't preclude them. This is my case in chief, I'm going to put my case on. I think it is a non-conforming use and I'm basing it on that. I'm not basing it on a 30-year-old document that has not recognized the judicial code as being a decision nor has been authenticated by the office. You can't take judicial notice of it as a passive rule. So...
I'm handing up to Mr. Penatar a copy of the 1986 variance. We're offering that, the basis that it is not, it is a public record and therefore an exception to hearsay rule. We are also offering the fact that you and the planning commission, sir, recognized that Geisinger was granted some approvals in 1986 and made specific reference to it in the planning information. And that too, and there's a record of that if you can copy it. And we are also, so we will ask that they take judicial notice of it. And...
I'll stop right here. We are taking judicial notice of it and your objection's overruled.
And I may, before we get started further, but after we make a difference in procedural motion, there was a document submitted to me this week regarding some assignment from some person of entity that seemingly doesn't exist and/or is not part of this proceeding. It's my position that the application filed records in W. D. as it was not filed by any recognized entity in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The application submitted to the zoning board requires that it be filed by an actual entity. There's no evidence at this point that the application was submitted properly. I reject your argument forward.
Mr. Jones?
If I can, the application that's filed references on it the Forever Sammy's Foundation, which is a nonprofit corporation. Co-counsel will address that. Additionally, it has right on it the name of the present owner that was there and since been, and we had this testimony. And without objection, on April 4th, it was sold to Diamond 307. Diamond 307, which had at the time with the application an equitable interest in the property. And Mr. Renaldi, and that's in the testimony, executed that, it was a notarized document. So we do have, one, Forever Sammy's, which is a nonprofit corporation that's on there. Two, we have the present landowner that was an equitable, you allow equitable owners to appear. And it's a notarized statement that's on it. So we do have all of it.
In response to that, actually, the foundation is not referenced in any way. The applicant's name is the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility. There's no recognized entity in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania by the name of the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility. Further, the application is signed by Mr. William Renaldi. There is no indication that he's affiliated in any way with the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility, which does not exist. Nor is there any indication he's affiliated with the Forever Sammy Foundation. If that was somehow referenced in any way. So it clearly is not filed by William Renaldi, who was apparently the principal associated with Diamond 307 LLC, which it could have been, it wasn't. And that's why they submitted this supplemental document seemingly to attempt to design some right that Forever Sammy Treatment Facility has. And that document, the assignment is signed by Mr. Henenhead. And I don't know what affiliation he has with the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility with the applicant. And again, I move that the application, sir...
Yes, if I can, if you take a look at the application. The application has right on it that identifies the equitable owner of the property. I know this is a... Three, Diamond 307 LLC, it's right there. I think it's on the 3rd or 4th line down, just where he signed it. At the last hearing, and it was offered, they admitted, is the deed to the property that actually shows Diamond 307 LLC. And co-counsel, Attorney Scannell, addressed that, put it into the record. So we do have the applicant and the evidence conformed to the portion that happened. If it's necessary, but it's not because of the date on it, that the pleadings conform to the evidence that was submitted in the last year earlier. This would be the only time we ever rule the landowner can't present testimony.
I reread everything again, and it's a close call, but I'm going to allow it to go forward.
Thank you. I would like to recall, as my first witness, Attorney Barrett, I'd like to go into the chain of custody on the 1986.
Already ruled on that, we're not going to waste time on that.
All right. If I can, just for the...
You can raise an objection and...
This is the record that I believe is contraventional to my client to recognize the document. He is not a government entity, it's not...
No, Mr. Sweeney is, and Mr. Sweeney has provided me with a copy of the variance.
Yes, and I...
And that's good enough for me. It's a city record and a city official has provided it to me. We're not going to explore that anymore. Your objection is noted of record. Now go to something else.
Can I ask you to do questions with your brother?
We already ruled on it, let's go to something else.
So I think...
Your objection is noted on the record.
Thank you. If I can, I'd like to call levels which can't read the materials with regard to the... If I can get to the heart of the matter, you are...
If you guys could kind of pull that microphone over so everybody can hear what you're saying, please.
I apologize. We are here regarding 125 Scranton Pocono Highway. We are here in an effort to open a non-hospital drug-free residential treatment facility. The parties present are the Forever Sammy Foundation Treatment Center, Diamond 307, the property owner. The name of the facility would be Lakeside Treatment Center LLC. It would be run and supervised by Mr. Dick Conneboy. We briefly discussed, last time we were present before the board, the ongoing epidemic that we're facing, the way that our society is being decimated by addiction, the opioid epidemic. It touches families, friends. Personally, it has touched my family. I'm sure there are many, many people here that are affected by addiction. We're trying to do something in the right direction to stem the tide of what is happening with addiction in our community. We're losing... We're literally losing loved ones here, almost up to 100 a year for the last several years. You have people that are willing to step forward and try to stem the tide in our local community. As was mentioned earlier this week, I did provide to Mr. Sweeney and to your solicitor, Mr. Penatar, a consent and acknowledgement giving any rights from the Forever Sammy Foundation to Diamond 307, although they were named on the application, to ensure that the board had the proper documents and names and in an abundance of openness to make sure that everyone in the public and the board knew who was involved and what the goals going forward were. With that being said, I would turn it over to co-counsel.
And... Mr. Scannell, can I just make a contribution? So the applicant, from the perspective of the applicant, is the Forever Sammy Foundation?
If I can, I address that. The applicant is Forever Sammy's, it's on the application. It's also Diamond 307 LLC, which is also on the application. And we provided testimony at the last... You already ruled on it, I know, Danny, but just so the record's clear. You provided testimony in the deed for it to allow that, without objection, at your last hearing.
Just one second. Is Forever Sammy Foundation, which operates sober houses in the city of Scranton, currently, are they an applicant to this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a copy of that letter that was submitted to the zoning officer and the solicitor. Hand it to me, it's on the calendar.
I have it now. No, Jack gave me copies. There we go. Mary needs a copy.
With that, if I could turn it over to co-counsel?
If I can, I'd like to call...
I'm going to ask you, hold up a second so we can read this letter?
Sure.
Oh, I apologize.
So, Mr. Scannell, with this letter, you're asking that Diamond 307 become part as co-applicant?
Correct.
It's different from the first applicant, the original application?
Their name in the original application is...
Yeah, he's been...
We discussed how this would go with the property. But to clarify any concerns, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, let's see what happens, yeah.
So on that question, can we get a representation? And is authorized signer on behalf of the foundation? What role he plays with the Forever Sammy Foundation?
I think the document speaks for itself, just like I couldn't go into unnecessary as it was determined, cross-examination of Mr. Barrett or of the...
Says he's co-founder. That's his title.
All righty, if I can, Mr. Salmon?
And so you had asked, oh. Can I get an understanding with regards to the campaign itself? Are all five of the sitting members?
Mr. Morris was not at the first meeting. He's been brought up to date with what happened at the first meeting. And the other four people have been at the first meeting.
So Mr. Morris was not present?
He was not present at the first meeting, at the first hearing.
He's our alternate.
Yeah, I don't know the answer. I didn't know that was an issue tonight. I don't dispositively know, other than to make up a quorum whether you can participate if you weren't at the other hearing. And I guess if the other person, if this were to be continued, comes back, I don't... I've never, I haven't run into that issue, but I'm not waiving any rights of objection.
Our alternate's been brought up to date with what went on. We'll go forward from here. And I don't know the answer either.
Yeah, but I'm not waiving any objection. I would assume that if he wasn't here, he probably can't. But, you know, not that I, I think, I'm sure he's a very fair and learned man, whatever the law is, the law is.
And I have no objection to him observing what he presented. And I have no objection to him observing the potential testimonies, and I also have no objection to his testimony.
No problem. So noted. Let's go with testimony now.
Now that we're quickly done with that, I'll get to my first witness, if I can. You tell me when you're ready.
I can ask a question.
Are we going back to the applicant, the other applicant?
Yes, this is still the applicant, yes.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not, I'm a licensed real estate broker.
Okay, could you please raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Patrick W. Salmon, S-A-M-M-O-N. I live at 45 Montgomery Avenue in West Pittston, PA.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you're going to offer Mr. Salmon as a real estate expert?
Yes, and he's a licensed real estate broker in the state of Pennsylvania.
I'm familiar with his licenses, I don't know whether the other side wants to, wants to consent or cross-examine Mr. Salmon as to his qualifications.
I have no questions to Mr. Salmon's qualifications, I recognize...
We'll accept Mr. Salmon as a real estate expert.
Where do you work, Mr. Salmon? Can you give the board a little bit of background of where you worked and what your involvement was with this project?
Yes, I'm a commercial real estate broker with Heinerfeld Commercial Real Estate here in the city. We were engaged by the Geisinger Health System to list this, along with a number of other properties, surplus properties, for, for sale. And I've handled the, the listing of this, the marketing, since about a month after the listing was, was signed, and I've been involved in, in the sale of both major parcels of the, of the Lake Scranton Medical Clinic property.
Now, can you describe for the board what the historical uses were for this property?
Sure.
The historical uses of the property, my apologies, ma'am.
The property, let's just, the property that Geisinger owned originally started as, actually, two single-family properties. One, the larger property on which the medical clinic rests, was purchased in 1947 by Robert Store, the Store &amp; Fister Furniture Company, and he, he owned it until 1963, which he's, when he sold it to the Elks Club, they moved from North Washington Avenue up to, up to Lake Scranton. The Elks Club expanded the building, and they, they had their clubhouse, and a lot of people, I'm sure in the audience, attended functions there. In 1986, they acquired some additional land from the Pennsylvania Gas Water, this was a strip of land running approximately 100 feet back from the clinic as it stands, clinic property, towards the, towards Lake Scranton, for about 600 feet. In 1986, the Elks Club then sold the property, the store, the store property, the Robert Store property, to, to Geisinger, and they further enlarged the, the building, so the third, the third expansion. They turned around the entrance, if you went to the building, you have to, you have to enter it from, from what would appear to be the back, back part of the, of the, of the building. They, they received approvals for a, what I'm told, a 30-physician-staffed medical clinic with a pharmacy. They had seven laboratories, an x-ray suite, minor procedure rooms, and several offices, as well as 25 examining rooms. In 1993, Geisinger acquired the, the second residential property that would be on, on the right, that's the one where all the trees have been cut down. That, and they converted that, that building, they used that for their administrative offices, for their clinic administrative offices. In 2017, or prior to that, Geisinger decided that the clinic was, was too small, and they, they needed to enlarge it, but they're, they, because of the, the size limitations there, they'd have to do that somewhere else. So they put the property up for sale, they listed it for sale in 2017. In 2018, the administrative office parcel, the former Memlo home, was, was, was sold. And in, just shortly after the, the beginning of 2019, this year, this year, the clinic parcel was sold to the same individual, and that, that ended Heinerfeld's involvement with the property per se.
Okay, now, with regard to the property, through time, you showed it to different prospective tenants, is that correct?
Purchasers, correct.
Purchaser, if I can have the record clarify, you showed it to various persons through Heinerfeld that...
Yes.
...may want to purchase. Can you describe to the board the various persons or entities?
Sure. We had four prospects who were interested in continuing the, the medical use of the property. They were one and two and three, three doctor practices. They, they can, all concluded that the building was too big.
Objection, here, sir.
Well, I was, I was there.
He was the...
I was there, I was the listing, they told me this.
Overruled.
They, they told me it was too, too large, and we got no offers from any of these four prospects. We had interests from, from two schools. One, a charter school, and the other was a private grade school. In, in both cases, the building was either too, too large, matter of fact, the, the folks from the charter school were told by their, their architect that it should be demolished, there'd be, be too much work to renovate it into classrooms, to convert it to classrooms. And the, the other folks, the private school, felt that they couldn't use it either, the, the examining rooms were just too small to be, to be used as classrooms and whatnot, so they, they walked away without any offers. The most interesting one was a dance and musical school, music school, and they liked it, they thought they could grow into it, but they walked away from it. There, there's a large file room on the second floor of what originally was the, the, the store residence, and the, the woman who ran the dancing school herself, she, she went like this, she danced around the school, and, and went all around this building, all of this room, right, all around it, and she said, "It's too small." So they, they decided to walk away. Again, they, they liked the, the, the exam rooms, they thought they would be good for the music instruction, but they were also concerned about the high taxes. There's, there's a very high assessment of this property, equates to about $1,200,000. The taxes are in the $70,000 range, so that, that scared them off as well. We had a plumbing company who looked at it to be used as their business headquarters, but again, they, they concluded that there was more land than they needed, but they, the building, as well as, as building area, but it would be too, too, too expensive to, to convert it to, to their use. We had three developers look at converting the property to multifamily use, garden apartments, townhouses, whatnot. The, the strip of land that I mentioned before that was acquired from the, from the, the gas and water company that runs along the, the reservoir property, about 1.4 acres out of the 4.3 acres that the property became, there was a deed restriction against building on this parcel. So with, with all the setbacks and everything else that was required, none of the developers felt that they could economically convert this property to, to multifamily residential. We had two institutional users, one residential facility for physically handicapped people. Again, the interior floor plan, the size of the rooms and everything was a problem, they felt it would be too expensive to convert it to what they needed. And we had a residential juvenile treatment facility, and they were back and forth all the time, they were hot to trot, and then they weren't. They, they never made an offer, and they never, never explained why, but they just kind of disappeared. Then we had a, a party with unspecified development plan. Geisinger sold the property to this person who's, let's see here, they, they, they sold the, to this party, who then subsequently sold it to the, the people who currently are the, the owners of record now. And finally, we had three who didn't specify any uses, they didn't reveal them, they didn't make any, gave no reasons, and they made no offers. So basically, that's the, the history of...
And based upon that, did you, do you have an overall judgment as to why the prospective persons didn't make any offers?
Well, I can just repeat theirs, without imposing my opinion on them. The, the building was too, too large for most of them, the, the floor plan was too difficult, too expensive to convert to the, the uses that they, many of these plausible uses that they, they had in mind, and that the property's land area contained, of the 4.3 acres, 1.4 acres had a building restriction on it. So these three factors that were reported by prospective purchasers, not me, prospective purchasers, I think are the, the principal reasons why none of these folks made an offer, and, and, and kind of indicative of the, of the problem, problems that the, the features that make this, this, this property difficult to use in a, in a productive and economical fashion.
Now, could you please describe for the board the neighborhood that the premises is located in?
Well, we, obviously, single-family detached residences. But we also have a significant number of, of non-single-family detached residents, and I, I went out in a circle of about three-quarters of a mile, basically, if you're coming up Ozik Street after you've gone through the underpass, basically, up there to the, to the city line. You have two garden apartment complexes, Oakwood Park Gardens and Mountain Lake Apartments, that was the Baldassari Development, that's had a change of names. There's an elderly housing apartment building, Lutherwood, it's been there for a while. There's a new personal care home, the St. Catherine Manor. There are two houses of worship, Temple Hesit and Grace Church. Obviously, there's the reservoir, and for many, many years, there was either the Elks Club or the, the medical clinic. So you had quite a few non-single-family dwellings as well.
Are there any use or valuation dilemmas that you've identified for...
Sir?
Speaking of the...
Yes. All right, are there, are there any use or dilemmas that this particular property that you observed has, have?
Well, it, again, it became too small for Geisinger. The, the obvious replacement party would have been another hospital system, but in this hyper-competitive environment that they, they operate in, that wasn't going to happen. Geisinger was not going to sell to Commonwealth. The next best alternative would have been a, a small, smaller medical practice. Again, we had four of those people from four of those practices, look at the building, they all declined, they thought it was too big. And the, the, the last factor was that there's really not enough land with, with the, with the restriction against a building on this back parcel, 1.4 acres of the 4.3 acres. There's not enough land to develop a feasible residential development plan either.
Do you have any overall conclusions with regard to what you observed on the property?
I, I would say that the, the proposed use as, as described by Attorney Scanlon should be able to take care of, should be able to live with and, and take advantage of some of the, the disadvantages that the, the other properties didn't have. They can provide for their, the people they're, they're treating because the private and clinical, recreational, social, whatever factors out of everyone's view, and certainly handle the, the parking requirements, and it can become an, an effective partner in, in treating this awful scourge that we now, now face. My final observation would be that based on its marketing history, and taking judgments gleaned from people who actually looked at the property with an interest in buying it, as well as the, the mixed-use character of the, of the land, land pattern in the neighborhood, I would, I would think that the, I would conclude that the, the unique physical characteristics or conditions of this property would prohibit its development in, in strict conformance with the zoning ordinance. In other words, it doesn't seem like there's any, any use, that likely use, other than this one, that would, that would be legally permitted. Certainly, the, the permitted uses under the zoning ordinance don't seem to meet the, to pass the test. I, I don't think that the, the proposed use will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We've had medical treatment and I don't, medical uses there before, and I don't think it will, the proposed use will substantially or permanently impair the use or, or the development of any adjacent properties as well.
No, Mr. Sam, if I can, just for the purpose of the record, how long have you been in real estate?
Since 1972.
Do you have any questions? I, I have no further questions, if the board has any, we would ask that they be entertained at this point, or...
Cross.
Thank you. Mr. Salmon, I have some questions for you.
Sure.
When did the property first get listed, do you know?
In 2017, early 2017, I think it was February, I have the listing contract here.
And the seller was Geisinger Medical Center, right?
Geisinger Medical Clinic, technically.
You're familiar with Geisinger, right?
Yes.
Geisinger Hospital at CMC on Mulberry Street?
Yes.
Familiar with that, right?
Yes.
You're familiar with Geisinger Danville, correct?
Yes.
You know, recognize Geisinger to be a major corporation in northeastern Pennsylvania, correct?
Absolutely.
Because of your knowledge of the real estate world, you know that Geisinger spent about $18 million... Because of your knowledge of the real estate world, you know that Geisinger spent about $18 million to move down to Mount Pleasant, correct?
They spent a lot of money. I don't know how much they spent.
And Geisinger made a determination that that property no longer fit its needs for a medical facility, correct?
No, they said it outgrew their requirement. They needed more space. Not that it didn't meet, not that it wasn't an adequate medical facility. They were just getting more patients there than they could handle. That's what I was told by their chief architect.
They weren't going to use it as a medical center anymore, correct?
I think it's been answered. I've asked the solicitor before.
They outgrew it. They weren't going to impose any...
All right.
They weren't going to impose any...
And so they're interested in not using it for a medical facility anymore, and they listed it for sale through your agency?
Yes.
All right. And you showed it to medical doctors, correct?
Correct.
And those medical doctors said, "That building won't work for us," right?
That's correct.
With regards to this particular, when did Geisinger move out? Did you answer, I'm sorry, do you know when they moved out?
May of 2015.
So they moved out in 2015, listed with you in 2017?
Mm-hmm.
It sold in 20...
Two components, 2018 and 2019.
By the way, you mentioned that what we sometimes refer to as the Memlo House, that began operations in 1993 as administrative offices?
Let's see. That's why it was purchased in '93, so shortly after.
When the property was listed with you in 2017, what was the highest price it was listed at?
The entire property? The clinic was at $495, and the, you want to know the Memlo?
Sure. When is a package deal, correct?
Well, no. It was listed, two separate listings. So one could buy one portion or the other.
But ultimately, you said that the clinic side was listed for $495, correct?
Yes.
And then the Memlo property, of course, would have had its own price?
I think $200 and something.
And then ultimately, both properties sold to RSP, correct?
That's correct.
Was the sale price $200,000 for the two of them?
It was $110 for the house and $200 for the clinic.
So the ultimate price was $310 for the two properties?
That's right.
At what point did the price drop, do you know? When you're showing the doctors, when you're showing the dance studio, when you're showing the school, when did the price drop?
It was never dropped. An offer, two offers were made to Geisinger, they accepted them.
So all the other buyers thought they were coming in at that $495-plus price, correct?
I object.
No, no, no. They were encouraged to make an offer. Everybody was encouraged to make an offer. Nobody was, nobody was...
Now, you're familiar with real estate in Scranton, right?
Yes.
Lockwana County?
I was born here, starting in 1964, or '46, rather. So I've been kicking around dirt in Lockwana County for a while.
Would you say that properties in the neighborhoods surrounding the University of Scranton are more desirable or less desirable?
I'm going to object. There's no, what?
Sustained.
Yes.
I don't see the...
I thought you offered testimony that he went around...
What are the properties? Well, let's see, what's your foundation for...
Yeah, go ahead. If he did any appraisals, and if he, I didn't offer him as, if I can, just for the purpose of the record, Mr. Sam is a very, very accomplished, and we all know him as a Realtor. One time, he was one of only two or three MIA appraisers. He no longer does appraisal work. In order to get to the particular points that they're going to do, it would be outside of his licensing, so he's not going to offer that opinion, but have at it, although I think the solicitor already ruled on it. But I would like to hear the foundation myself.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. What was the purpose of driving around the neighborhood?
Just to familiarize myself again, refamiliarize myself again for tonight's session.
But why?
Why not?
So it wasn't for the purpose of offering testimony here tonight? You just decided to offer that up to us today?
Why are we badgering the Realtor?
I'm trying to understand why. I mean, you've seen it. All right, let me rephrase the question.
Rephrase it, isn't it?
Let me ask you this. You offered an opinion that it wouldn't affect the neighborhood, the long-term sustainability or of the neighborhood. That opinion, you're offering that as a real estate professional, right?
Right, right.
Okay, so wasn't going around the neighborhood part of that?
Just to reacquaint myself and update, make sure that I hadn't missed anything. I've also looked at other large properties in the neighborhood, which I can't talk about.
Tell me this, what do you understand this used to be?
A, seems like a psychological use where people are counseled, to be weaned forever, I guess, from drug and alcohol.
It might be part of your application.
I understand there's no medical, no medicines, no whatnot. It's more a social, psychological counseling center.
What are the hours of operation?
I have no idea.
You have no idea?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I understand that people will stay there, so I guess it's...
What are the hours of operation?
So I guess people would be there around the clock.
Do you know?
I believe so. I believe that...
How many people will be working there, do you know?
No, I don't.
How many people will be staying there, do you know?
I don't.
Where will the people that are staying there come from, do you know?
I don't.
What other activities will go on in that property, other than what you just described?
None that I know of.
So no other services of any kind?
Again, I really don't know enough to talk about the specifics of it.
I would have thought that those would have factored into your opinion, but I thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Sam. And I have no further questions. I don't know if Attorney Powell...
The board have any questions, Mr. Sam?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Sam.
If I can, I would, just for the purposes of the record, with regard to Mr. Sam's testimony, call the board's attention to the fact that offered as part of the application was the deed dated January 3, 2019, which does say Geisinger Clinic as the grantor to RSP Enterprises LLC, which is identified on the application also.
It's a public record. It's accepted.
I didn't hear you, Dan, what?
It's accepted. It's a public record.
Yeah. And I think it's part of it, may already be in the record. If I can, I'd like to call Jack Versali.
Can you please raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
John R. Varelli, 50 Finn Street, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania.
I believe at the last hearing, Mr. Varelli was accepted as a professional planner and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Am I right on that?
That's correct.
Do you have any...
If I can, I have his vitae I'd like to mark into the record.
Sure.
If you'd like to take a look at it. If you may have a moment, counsel looks.
Ask just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sir, we met last week. I just want to make sure, you're not an expert in treatment of people with addiction, correct?
Zoning and planning.
All right.
I'm aware of the regulations, though, affecting them.
You're not an expert in, first of all, do you have any financial interest in this facility?
No, I do not.
Do you have any interest in any other addiction facilities?
No, I do not. I've testified in other cases, none of which I've had a legal interest in.
I don't have any other questions for you on my presentation.
If I can't have a... Jack, you were at the last hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, sorry. And you provided testimony with regard to the type of facility, is that correct?
I did.
And with regard to the type of facility, could you please describe that for the board?
The facility that we're applying for, in terms of licensing, that would be applicable through the State Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, would be for a non-hospital, drug-free treatment facility, residential facility. And as such, it means, it's a mouthful, but that's how they describe it under Title 25, Section 701 of the Pennsylvania Code. There's a specific definition for different types of substance abuse treatment facilities. This facility will not administer any drugs, and the patients that they receive at the facilities would have already gone through a detoxification process before they're accepted. Therefore, once they are admitted into this facility, they will be provided with psychological counseling, behavior modification, but there won't be any maintenance drugs or detoxification drugs provided within the setting itself.
If I can, just for the purposes of the record, you identified Title 28 of the PA Code 701. I just ask the board to take additional notes of the PA Code, and I'm also offering that as a consented with regard to... And that's, if I can, just for the purposes of the record...
What's the site on that again? PA Code what?
28 PA Code 701.
Thank you.
Now, you heard Mr. Conneboy's testimony at the last hearing.
Yes, I did.
Can you please describe for the board what is the extent of stay for residents at this particular facility, proposed facility?
The average stay is 45 days, but it could range anywhere from 30 days to 90 days, depending upon the intake information from a patient when he or she is first admitted to evaluate what type of treatment, counseling, and recovery methods would be appropriate. But about 45 days would be the average in terms of the amount of stay.
Okay, you have some very large exhibits here. Can you please describe for the board what you have on those?
Okay. Before I put them up, they are site plans of the facility, and they're tied into showing and demonstrating as we progress how the plan complies with Section 806-G for a change of a non-conforming use from one use to another.
Can you please describe what's on that plan for the board?
The plan you're looking at is a site plan and layout of the facility that we're proposing for the change of non-conforming use. As stated earlier, within the boundaries of the property, it encompasses about 4.33 acres. The size of the building is about 22,000 and some odd square feet, almost 23. And as you could see from the property itself, there is an extensive amount of parking that wraps around the building from the upper right-hand corner to where I'm pointing, down along to the rear of the property, and even with some over surplus parking that Geisinger likely used when it was in operation as a medical clinic. The facility itself is surrounded by vegetation on all sides. And with particular reference to 309, I think it's important to point out, I have a drawing right behind this one, and it shows elevations. It'll be difficult for you to read them at this distance, but the elevation difference from this parking lot and the rear of the building where all the entrance and activities will take place is about 16 to 20 feet higher than the ground elevation where you would be standing going into Oakmont Village on 307. Directly across the street from this parking lot is vacant land. There's nothing there. There's some rock outcroppings. And the importance of the elevation difference is, when you stand on that property, and I've looked at it from a number of different angles, it's difficult to see any of the residential properties across 307. And if we can't see them, if they're at a lower elevation, they're going to have a difficult time seeing this portion of the parking lot. And the part where we're doing all the activities for entrance and patients being dropped and off, it's entirely invisible because it's in the back of the building, unless there's some way somebody could do mirrors to be able to come up with a visual effect. The back of the building where all the activity takes place for entrances is not visible at all from any property, from 307 or any properties that along that stretch of 307 on the other side of the street. Right now, with the vegetative cover coming in, it's along this particular section of the parking lot, it's even going to provide a further means of obscuring visibility in or out of that parking lot. The use itself has 116 spaces, which I think was sort of evident as the intensity of the use when Geisinger had approval for 30 doctors to operate from that facility, along with a lab work and a pharmacy. The amount of parking that we're going to require, based upon 30 patients and seven full-time employees during the normal working daytime staff, based on the zoning regulations, would be 22 spaces. So we have a surplus of parking that we would very unlikely use. The other thing is, when we did the parking calculation, we used it based upon Scranton's ordinance. But one of the things to point out, the residents of the facility normally do not have vehicles. They're not encouraged or in some cases not allowed to have them. So any activities that they have to go off-site to for religious worship, doctor visit, or whatever that would require them to leave the facility would be provided by the operators of the facility itself.
Is there a possibility...
Is there a possibility that some of the patients might have a vehicle that stays there while they're going through the program?
When Mr. Conneboy testified at the previous meeting, he indicated that in his experience, which covered 19 years, and it was based upon his work at Clearbrook, that there was one instance where a person had a vehicle that they brought in on-site.
So there is a possibility, though?
There is a possibility. And even if they did, we would still have a surplus parking of about 80-some spaces over and beyond what we would be required to have.
Thank you.
Now, the other thing I think that's important to point out is, when you look at the property itself and you look at the standards under 806-G, it starts off with one blanket statement, and then it breaks it down into subcategories. It states that for one non-conforming use to be changed to another non-conforming use, the board has to make a determination based upon the evidence we present that the new use will either be no more objectionable than the one that we're replacing, or less. We think that with the documentation that we provide, we could show that it's extremely less in intensity, and there will be no external effects on the property because we're not changing the size of the building, we're not changing the footprint, we're not doing any exterior alterations. So what you see when you drive by or go on the property right now is the same building that you would see once it's in operation. The building itself lends itself very well to the proposed use, that being a treatment facility, because the residential component, they're talking about having a maximum of 30 residents residing in there. The way it was divided up for doctor space for examining rooms fits it perfectly. So as opposed to what Mr. Sam testified for in terms of a lot of other people couldn't handle the project because it became cost-prohibitive with the amount of retrofitting you would have to do for different uses, there's very little that would have to be done in terms of retrofitting it for this particular use. The other thing I'd like to point out, it was a medical facility, a clinic. It's going to stay as a medical facility in terms of providing counseling and treatment for people who were previously addicted to a substance. And so it's not a great leap. We're not going from something that's medical to commercial or to industrial. It's staying within the same category that it was and would remain. And while a zoning ordinance could regulate the use of the property, when you talk about medical provisions, that's more of a generic term as opposed to controlling what type of treatment is provided within a facility. Now, if you'd like me to, I could stop there, and I could answer any questions that you may have about the site plan itself, or I could go into the specifics of what qualifications or what criteria we would have to prove to the board to show that it's less... or what criteria we would have to prove to the board to show that it's less offensive, less intensive, and it fits in with the proposed change that we're doing. So I would do it at your leisure either way.
I want you to continue.
Okay. I'm going to go back there so I could take six, 806-G. I'll leave it down here. I'd like to point out, and starting off what I mentioned earlier, but I'd like to read it verbatim into the ordinance under 80 Section G, under Item 2. The second sentence reads, "The board shall determine whether the applicant has provided sufficient proof to show that the proposed new use will be equally or less objectionable in external effects as compared to the previous non-conforming use." Then it follows with specific items that you should take into consideration when making that evaluation. The first one starts off with traffic generation. Well, the amount of traffic, we looked at the Transportation Engineers Manual and presented this information before the Planning Commission at last week's meeting, that that transportation manual just takes uses and says, based upon this type of use, typically anywhere in the United States, what amount of traffic would be generated by this use. We took a twenty-two thousand square foot medical clinic and compared it to the charts and tables within that report, and it showed the amount of trip generation from the Geisinger Clinic when it was operating at that facility was four hundred, and I believe it was seventy-five. It was, it was a significant number. When they looked for something that read drug, non-hospital, drug-free treatment facility, there is no use in that traffic manual because it's such a new use. So the engineer looked at something that would be most similar to it and found it out, that when he looked under the readout for definitions, assisted living seemed to be like the most appropriate type of use that would match up with the category of what the use that we're proposing. And it showed that on the average, the amount of daily trips, maximum daily trips to the facility would be ninety-nine. That's trips in, trips out. As we said, because some, most of the patients won't have vehicles, you know, we believe that if you factored that out, that the amount of trip generation would drop down to about forty-five to fifty per day, and that would be visitors, people coming to work, and so on. So when you take the first look at the question of how it fits in and whether it's compatible to do the change of non-conforming use, the first factor, when you look at traffic and transportation, I think it's very evident that the amount of traffic that's going to be generated by this facility as compared to the Geisinger Medical Clinic will be significantly less. We're not talking about thirty doctors, we're not talking about the numerous patients that would be there on a daily basis, either going to the pharmacy or for lab work. So when you have less traffic going to and from a facility, you have a lot of benefits. Number one, you have less imposition of problems in the neighborhood in terms of traffic noise. You have less of a problem in terms of pedestrian movement within the parking lot due to the fact that you have a minimal amount of traffic coming in and out of the facility. So in terms of taking the first look at it, we believe that the facility will be far less intensive based upon the evaluation that we're required to provide to you regarding traffic. The next item is nuts, noise, excuse me, dust, fumes, glass, gases, odors, glare, vibration, fire, and explosive hazards. Well, again, with this facility, it's not going to have any chemicals on-site because they're not doing any type of maintenance drugs for the patients or residents that are residing there. And when you look at the items within there, noise, dust, fumes, gas, odor, glare, vibration, fire, and explosive hazards, I'm sure that the board has faced these items before, and it was probably more normally associated with some use going from what it was to an industrial or commercial use. This is not the case with our application. With regard to noise, there should be less noise because... There'll be less noise for a number of reasons. Number one, all the activities are contained within the building, so there's no outside activities taking place directly behind the building, and there's going to be no issue regarding noise, regarding vehicles. In fact, it'll be less noisy with the amount of vehicles that are going in and out of that site as compared to what had previously existed. So with those items within there, we feel that we meet those two criteria. The other thing is, there is existing lighting in the parking lot, that'll be evaluated, and if there's any adjustments to the lighting, they'll comply with the shielded screening type. But I don't think presently there's any, going to be any change in the lighting scheme for the facility that we could foresee at this point in time. The next item C is the amount and character of outdoor storage. There's no outdoor storage proposed with this facility. The only thing, obviously, that would be outdoor is if there was a refuse container that gets picked up by whoever the trash collector is for the facility. And we, again, it would be in the back of the building, it wouldn't be along any property lines of any residential properties, out of view, and in a location that would not adversely affect or impact anybody else in the neighborhood. The hours of operation if the use would be close to dwellings, I know this came up before. Because the people are residing there, there are no real hours of operation that are applicable, just as you have a residential dwelling, which these, and this is residential in nature, you don't stop residing in it at a fixed hour. So technically, if you're looking at the facility, while most of the activities where you have people coming in and out of the building would probably occur based upon prior testimony between the hours of eight and six o'clock in the evening, there's not going to be, and there's a ten o'clock curfew for anybody that is out, because sometimes people go home on home visits or things of that sort where they don't stay there on a permanent basis. So the hours of operation for residential, there's no end of a residential component, it's always in operation. The functional part in terms of the psychological counseling and other evaluation and peer group to peer group conversations takes place within that framework that I said probably from about eight to six, and I think that was based on prior testimony that I...
John, I can interrupt you, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Behind the board. At the last testimony, Mr. Conneboy testified till ten o'clock at night was the cutoff time. Now, it's a testimony given to us before the end of operation would be 10:00 PM. And, and I see it changed it to six now, and that's a big difference. And I questioned if the person had a second shift job, would they extend it to eleven? And he said, no, basically, and I don't want to go verbatim, but ten o'clock was the end.
The ten o'clock, the ten o'clock is, was, and still references, to say somebody goes out with a family member, they go bowling, and with somebody from, that takes them out bowling or to some type of social event. It has to be approved by the facility in terms of going out, and they know that they have to be back by ten o'clock. The other thing, when I talked about hours of operation, I'm talking about not recreational or off-site opportunities, but functional aspects of what the program is in terms of its operation within the facility.
Well, maybe I'm wrong. I consider the hours of operation from the opening bell to the end bell, which in this case would be ten o'clock, because if that's the final time they have to be into the facility, to me, that'd be the closing of the facility.
If you, if you want to interpret it that way, but I mean by ten o'clock lights out and in bed, it could be two guys sitting up playing cards or...
No, no, I'm not talking about the lights in the facility, I'm talking about the last one in the door.
The last one in the door would have to be in at ten o'clock.
Okay, so would, I'd interpret it that ten o'clock then is the end of the operation, or the end of business hours. I don't know what term you want to call it, but if that's, if that's, if that's the last person that can come in there, a resident that can come in there, then that'd be the end of the day.
It's the last time somebody could get re-entered into the property that's already resident there.
Mm-hmm.
But when they're re-entering it, they're not coming back in for counseling or anything, that likely concluded at the end of the business day, and they were doing something else of a recreational nature. So I'm separating the fact that you have a residential component, that you live there, and you're there for counseling primarily, and number two, you, it's not a prison, you could go out and with a, with the structure within the facility to do different types of recreational or places of worship. And usually, if you're accompanied by somebody, you're not just let to go free, so you have that drawback that you have somebody that's responsible for bringing you back at ten...
And, and that really isn't my question. I mean, I understand all that, and it's good to have, you know, accompanied out and everything. But my question is, it goes back to that hour of operation. If the last one can be, has to be in the door by ten, and that's what your testimony was just there, so I look at that as the end of operation at that point there, no matter who they're out with.
I don't agree with you.
And I, I don't, I don't understand how you can equate a residential, because it's not a, it's, all right, it's a residential treatment center, I guess, if I'm saying the little words correctly, a facility, but it's different than your house and my house when you come and go. So I have a hard time equating that together. But I just want clarity on the hours.
So noted.
Okay. So do we come to an agreement that it's ten o'clock? And, and if I can, other than hours of operation, I assume that the board is operating under the Fair Housing Act, which identifies dwelling units and activities for persons that are residing in this facility with their handicaps. So I really don't think that they are treated, I'm not understanding your interpretation. You're not treating them any differently than any other... No, I'm going by Mr. Conneboy's testimony last time here.
I, I think we're, hang, hang on, I think we're just talking semantics here. I think what Mr. Rowley is saying is that the inpatient treatment part of the operation is from eight to six. However, the outpatient treatment of people, if they have jobs or going to church or whatever, it's until ten o'clock. So it's the same thing, using two different terms.
Well, what I'm looking for is the end of the day at time. Like, when everything is done for that facility, everyone's back home that went out and whether worked or enjoyed themselves. And to answer your question, no, I'm not singling them out that way or anything like that. I just want to know at what time that final bell rings that everyone has to be back in that facility, is what I'm... Thank you very much. Fine.
Okay.
Okay.
The next one, Item E, it's compatibility of the character of the surrounding area. Now, I'd like to again reference the drawing when we talk about compatibility, or more specifically, the compatibility of the office inside of the same facility. Again, as I said earlier, there's no structural changes to the building. When you look at the surrounding area, you have Oakmont Housing Complex directly across the street. We're talking about traffic generation, and I gave you the numbers coming out of our facility. When you take that same manual and apply it to, I think, one hundred and fifty units within there, that area alone generates over eight hundred traffic trips per day from that location. So when you look at the surrounding area, there's, there's multifamily residential, there's apartments, and there's single-family residential. So when you look at the surrounding area in turn, in relationship to the compatibility of this use, number one, it was used for a high, far higher intense use when it was being operated as Geisinger Clinic. We're doing a lot, a lesser intense use, so it would have to be more compatible or not incompatible, because we only have to prove to you that we don't exceed the threshold of making it more out of character or of the neighborhood than what the previous use was. We're not doing any parking along this area, which has properties that are buttoned on Cleveland Street. Again, there's vegetated and screening there to be able to conceal this area of the property in which no activity is taking place from any adjoining properties from Cleveland Street. In the back of the property, we have Lake Scranton. That speaks for itself in terms of no adjoining neighbors. So the adjoining neighbors that you have for the property are basically ones along 307 across the street, and there's only a very limited number that are within visibility or eyesight of the property in any location in terms of how it would impact them. The other thing is, and I think this is very, very important, the back area of the facility that I'm showing you here is the area for people coming in. If you're going to visit, if you're going to be admitted to the facility, this is where you go. If you're going to leave the facility to go to an activity, this is where you leave. This area here is not visible from any of the properties along 307 or the adjoining properties on Cleveland Street. So we don't think it's an incompatible use in any, by any way, stretch of the imagination, and believe that it's quite compatible with the character of the neighborhood because you have single-family, but you also have a lot of multifamily in terms of the apartment complex, Lutherwood Facility, I think for the aging. So there's a lot more intense uses around there that generate a lot more activity. And I think, in all honesty, when we talk about compatibility, we have to look at the use as opposed to who is being serviced there. I'm sure a lot of people here tonight are not here to object to whether it's compatible or not, they're here to object to who is being treated. And that's...
All right, guys, guys, let's, you're going to have your chance to speak, you're going to have your chance to speak.
So I think if you make any ju... I think when you evaluate the application tonight, you have to evaluate it on the basis of what we're proposing and how it meets the standards of 806-G, and put aside any other side issues as to who the occupants would be.
I'm pretty sure the board, John, I'm pretty sure the board understands that, John. John, I have one quick question, since I can't see that far, and as you said, the numbers are small. What's the distance between that parking lot down the bottom that you said you weren't going to use to the, I'll say, the property line of the residents that live there on Cleveland Street?
There, yes. It's probably from this point here, there's going to the property, probably around...
And like, I hadn't seen that section. Would you say that vegetation is dense, semi-dense?
There's vegetation in the area along here, vegetation, along the back is vegetation, along the front is vegetation. This part is very vegetated. If you see, only one of the trees, one of the trees is vegetated. The only place, there's trees in the front, there's a lot of trees, the only place there is vegetation, the kind of string is along the driveway, interestingly, the property will be, this point, very, this, this...
Thank you. Just for the purpose of the record, the only place there isn't vegetation is what faces the former administrative office, the Memlo House?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's the only place where there isn't any vegetation around the surrounding border. The last item, under the standards that you're looking at, is potential expansion to alleviate existing conditions and parking shortages by improved site design, additional parking, and improved loading areas. We already showed you that we exceed the amount of parking we need, so we're not doing any plans to expand or extend the parking beyond the limits that we have shown on that site plan.
Are you familiar with the 1993 ordinance?
Yes, I am.
And with regard to the uses in the 1993 ordinance, have you formed an opinion...
Please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. With regard to the uses under the, in an R1C zone, under the 93 ordinance, for a, an area that's improved with a building of approximately twenty-one thousand square feet with paved parking area like this, have you formed an opinion with regard to those uses?
Yes, I did.
Could you explain to the board? Yeah?
Yeah, it would be very difficult to find a use in an R1 district that would be compatible in terms of trying to convert this from a non-conforming use to a conforming use. And to be honest with you, there would be no benefit to whoever the property owner would be, because a non-conforming use is a very valuable property, right, which you cannot duplicate. But it would be very difficult, and there's a very limited number of uses within the R1 district, none of which that I saw that could be used or be compatible with a building this size and with this type of internal configuration.
I see that they allow in the R1C agricultural uses. Would you say that this property lends itself to an agricultural use?
Obviously not, it's all developed and quite a bit of impervious surface.
Okay. With regard to a single-family detached dwelling, do you have an opinion on that?
Obviously, I'm sure there's some houses out there that are large, but twenty-two thousand square foot single-family dwelling is not one that you could readily use the property for.
How about a golf course?
No, you couldn't use it for a golf course.
How about a plant nursery restricted to the sale of items grown on the premises?
No, again, because you're just, you're dealing with a fixed development on the site that's not going to go away, it's not going to be demolished or changed to a different size or configuration, you wouldn't be able to use it for that either.
How about for community or public uses?
You wouldn't be able to readily use it for that either, because when you look at the interior of the building, again, it's divided up into rooms already, and to try to change it to something else, as my previous testimony indicated, would be, in most cases, cost prohibitive.
Now, with regard to outdoor recreation, I see that they're allowed as special exceptions. You formed an opinion on that?
Yes, I did. When you look at the outdoor recreation, it talks about outdoor recreation areas, not structures, so that section would not even be applicable. areas, not structures. So that section would not even be applicable to this particular property.
Now, with regard to the uses, I'm gonna ask you to take a look at one of the objectors exhibits. Please read that.
All right, the-
Write yourself with the terms.
Exhibit that you handed me is an application for a zoning permit or appeal requiring action by the zoning hearing board. The type of action circled is a variance, and it's to convert the Elk Lodge property from its existing use into, to convert it and potentially expand it to medical clinic of approximately 30 physicians. And that was the variance that was sought under this particular application, as I read it.
Now, with regard to the 19, 1983 ordinance, are medical clinics defined in that particular ordinance?
No, they're not-
Objection. As, it's already determined, apparently, that we can't pursue the variance argument. It's not relevant as to what a variance might have granted and or what-
What's your point first?
It would have to be the use in existence.
Yep. With regard to the ruling, the solicitor ruled that, that it came into evidence. I am allowed to ask, what were medical clinics that are on that piece of paper in 1983 with regard to the applicable ordinance? If, if you can't ask that, then I would ask that that be withdrawn.
What's the point?
What's the point with regard to it?
We're talking about 1993. What, what use was made in 1993?
Yes, and-
What happened before that is not relevant.
Yeah, I am. I would, I would like, I would like to get to that particular use.
But that's where we're at.
Yeah, I, I know that. And that has the use. I would like to establish the use that was established in 1986.
I thought all the testimony was that it was used as a medical facility in 1993.
It is. And I'd like to get-
Then we don't need to go any further.
I'd like to get to what are the attributes of it.
No, the attributes would be more actualized.
His objection is sustained. Go someplace else.
If I can, just an offer of proof.
Go ahead, but it's gonna be, I already sustained it.
What I would like to do is, I would have put of the record, including inner area, that medical clinics were not a defined term at that time, that the board granted a medical facility, which you have a copy of it there. With regard to the particular use, it also provided for additional uses that didn't exist under that ordinance, and it, the gentleman would testify as to his opinion with regard to Section 4.305, that added the uses that were allowed on that. What, what we're asking for with regard to our application is that Geisinger was allowed this particular use. There were no restrictions on inpatient or outpatient. There was no restrictions on time with regard to it. It was a use that's allowed on that. And with regard to medical clinics, you do have, and you could take notice for your medical clinics that are defined in the 1993 ordinance, it specifically says, no overnight. That does not exist in the 1983 ordinance for medical clinics. So we believe that with regard to this particular use under the 1990, the 1983 ordinance, this is that use. This is that medical clinic that would be allowed. And the gentleman would offer testimony with regard to that particular use, and why he hits all of those particular criteria.
Your objection is so noted, and it's still sustained. Your, your objection is still sustained. Let's go someplace else now.
Now, with regard to this particular property, you've heard Mr. Salmon's testimony. Is that correct?
Yes.
And when you formed your opinion as to that none of the uses under the 93 ordinance would apply, and I just did a sampling of some, with regard to that, is that based upon something that's unique to this property?
Something that you would, what, I'm sorry?
Is, what's unique about this property? How's-
Oh, the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the word unique. What's unique about this property is its size, both the land area and the size of the property being 22,000 square feet. The way it was designed, it was designed as a medical clinic, and it's very difficult to convert something or retrofit something into a different type of use, permitted or otherwise, without spending an enormous amount of money. As I said earlier during my testimony, the layout of the facility in terms of the examining rooms and other facilities that were utilized by Geisinger lend themselves readily to the conversion to the proposed use.
Now, with regard to the document objectors number, and I'm, I'm not sure what it's numbered, with regard to the 86 documents, are there any conditions that the zoning hearing board put on a medical clinic with regard to that particular facility?
Objection. You go by the non-conforming use, the actual use in place in 1993.
I, I asked the gentleman if there were any conditions on a document that's in evidence. I could have him read the whole thing, or he could-
It's in evidence already. We could, we, we have it in front of us. We don't need it.
Yeah.
Go someplace else, please.
Do you know of any other supplemental conditions that would have restricted the property in 86?
There, I, I examined-
Sustained. Something else. No more questions on the 1986 variance, please.
With that, I would rest with the continuing objection.
Fine.
Thank you.
Cross.
Sir, this facility, in my understanding, it's 21,000 square feet?
I believe that I saw it as 21 or 22,000, but it's in that range. I'd have to go back and look at the documents that, when it was advertised.
Have you seen a floor plan for the proposed use?
I've seen a floor plan of the layout as it currently exists.
That's not what I asked. Have you seen a floor plan for the proposed use?
I do not believe a floor plan would be devised until they received approval from the board to proceed.
So how many square feet do you understand are gonna be dedicated to the residential component?
The entire facility would be developed for the residential treatment facility in both rooms, and, and also treatment facilities for counseling.
Let's talk about the sleeping quarters or the living quarters, if you will. How many square feet are gonna be dedicated to that use?
I can't give you an answer, but what I could answer is when we talked about Chapter 28, Title 701, D-DAP provides specific spacing requirements for rooms per patient. So they would have to meet those requirements, and I believe it comes out to about 120 square feet per room. I could be wrong, but there are specific requirements, if you look under Chapter 28 under D-DAP, where it tells you what the size of a room would have to be for a facility to qualify under this proposed use.
Yeah. I, I'm going to object as to relevance. Obviously, we've not asked for a variance with regard to the size of any of the rooms, so we have to comply with your ordinance. I don't think it's relevant.
I'm happy to explain why I believe it's relevant. I believe that they have not identified the full use of this building. They're suggesting that it's gonna be a residential component. I believe there's gonna be an outpatient component. I think it should be, I should be free to explore it.
We have not asked for, nor do we have to ask for, they've already laid the foundation. You could have all the outpatient that you want there. We've, Mr. Conneboy has described in great detail what we're actually going to have, but a variance was given with regard to this. We've heard two days of testimony what Geisinger did, so quite clearly that exists. Are we looking for that? No, we are not. You wanna make that a condition? No detox on there? Go right ahead. You wanna hold us to 30? Go right ahead. Do you wanna have-
I prefer to ask my questions than have Mr. Johnson's questions.
My objection was relevance. If, I didn't ask him for that, we're not seeking it.
We'll, we'll explore a little bit, and let's see where it goes.
Okay.
What other, I understand the residential component. People are gonna sleep, people are gonna bathe, people are gonna do things like that. They're gonna play cards, as you described. What's gonna happen in the rest of this building?
You'd have to explain that further.
Are there gonna be outpatient activities?
If they are, they're going to be supervised. You could have a person that's in this facility that goes to work every day. That's not, beyond-
How about people that don't live in the facility? Are they gonna come in?
Let's, if I can. Yes, I believe that is what a lot of people would like to know here. Are, is this facility-
I, I asked the question.
Well, I, I'm going to withdraw my objection as to relevance, because I, I do think that's a legitimate question.
Thank you for appreciating my question.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
Sure. Are there gonna be outpatient activities at this facility?
Not under the license that they're applying for.
All right. Do you know, is there gonna be room for outpatient facility, outpatient activity at this facility?
I don't know, because they would have to apply for that, and that would be on their license. When you look at the section that I referred to under D-DAP, they have everything from spacing requirements to qualification of counselors, to safety facilities and everything else. So unless, if the board approves this, the next layer of approval would have to come from the state, and the applicant would be able to, be able to have to document that he meets a lengthy length of requirements for the licensing process.
Right. And if they were to pursue that, that would be important for traffic count, correct?
No.
No. Cars coming in and out to take advantage of the facility will not be important for traffic count, correct?
The traffic count that I gave you is based upon a traffic manual. That's the best I could tell you. I, if something else, you have something else in terms of beyond the traffic manual, I'd be happy to listen to-
Do you know if there's gonna be any kind of meetings of any kind outside, outside of the residential component?
Oh, yeah, there could be meetings on site where they bring in somebody to speak to the people in there, because when you look at the opioid crisis, there's two phases. We talked about the detox, and that's getting rid of the chemical dependency. The program, when you're into a residential treatment facility that's non-drug, you're dealing with the psychological component, because there were a lot of factors that probably went into somebody becoming dependent.
How about people that are not staying in the facility? Will services be rendered or offered to people outside of the facility?
No, not under their license.
I'm not asking under their license, when they're in patients.
If it's not under their license, they're prohibited from doing it.
And what if they use a different portion of the building for those activities?
They would have to be licensed by the state.
Okay. So is there anything that would prohibit that?
They would have to come back and apply for an expansion of a non-conforming use if this one is approved, if they were going to extend what they're asking for tonight into something different or beyond, what, 30 patients.
Has the owner told you what he intends to do with it?
If, if I can just cut to the chase, I know you've given some leeway. I have no objection to the board adding that as a condition of approval that we don't. I'm not here tonight to hide the P, so-
What can that condition be, sir?
You can phrase it the way you would like it.
What can the condition be?
There would be no outpatient services.
No outpatient? No, no meetings after hours, no alcohol anonymous meetings, narcotics anonymous meetings, no community meetings?
Stop. Okay, I said outpatient. Outpatient means we're providing service. If we have a community room, and we're trying to solve, and I know you really do appreciate it, there's people with addictive problems. There's 15 people a day that die in Pennsylvania from the opioid crisis. What we're trying to do is deal with that. If there is before 10:00, just like anybody else could have in their home or their facility, an AA meeting that's outside of what we offer as this program, yes, they can do that. But outpatient services, and there's Title 28, and it describes outpatient services. I'm not here to get something from you that you don't wanna give or that I'm not asking for. I'm not looking for those outpatient services under that particular title. Everybody thinks that we're having a methadone clinic there, or some people do. If you wanna add a condition, no methadone clinics there, no outpatient under these regulations, that's fine. If this is a dwelling structure and people have AA meetings, they can have them. And, and I would understand if he has a question, how many people would come? We'll restrict it to whatever our HOP is, and whatever it is with regard to the parking that we have. You have an enforcement officer. I'll give you all of that. I'm not here to try to sneak in another outpatient clinic. That is not what we're here for. That's not what we want. I'd leave it to Mr. Penatar. He could phrase the language and-
Let me interrupt here. When it comes to that section, that's the five members' decision of what the contingency is put on there. When the time's right, if we feel the need to put it on, we will put it on.
What, what is-
And I'm offering that, sir.
What is the authorization under the HOP? Do you know?
The authorization for the HOP is a low-volume driveway that covers anywhere from 25 to 370 vehicles.
Okay. How about, is that a shared driveway, correct?
No, not that I know of. I, I believe it only goes-
The access to the Memelo property, sir?
There's the access partially to the, that property on the side, the residential one, but the balance of the-
Just pull it back up and explain it to me again. Is that a shared driveway with the Memelo property?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rinaldi has an option on that property, correct?
I do not know that.
What are his, you don't know that?
I don't know if he has an option on that, no. I'm here for zoning and planning issues, not-
Oh, I know, I appreciate that. Because when I look at our Scranton zoning ordinance under 806G, it talks about approval for a non-conforming use, correct?
Correct.
And then we went to the planning commission under 118C, correct? I'm sorry, under 119C, correct?
Uh, that's, is that the section that refers to special exception?
Yes.
Yeah, that, it's special exception, and if you complete the sentence for a change of a non-conforming use.
And 119C says you have to comply with all aspects of the ordinance, including 118C4, correct?
The ordinance speaks for itself. But go ahead. Just ask him, what does it say?
All right, sir, what does 118C4 say?
Why don't we give it to him? He could read it.
Oh, because you told me to ask it that way, so I did.
No, no, I didn't. I said the ordinance speaks for itself.
And you said one should ask us?
Yeah, give it to him. He can read it. If you don't have it, I'll look it up.
I've got it. C4.
C4.
I'd like you to go to B.
Okay.
Traffic will not result in or significantly add to any significant traffic hazard or significant net increase in traffic congestion.
I missed, could you hold up for a second until I find it? You're at, page nine are you on?
Page 18, 1 hyphen 18. How would I walk over with you?
This, this here, yeah.
I don't know what page you have.
This one down here? Yeah, okay. Okay.
So 118C4B seems to say traffic will not result in significant or significantly add to significant traffic hazard or significant net increase in traffic congestion.
I have ju-
After taking into, into any improvements proposed or funded to be completed by the applicant. Have I read that correctly?
If I can, yes, if I can. If I could get a ruling from the solicitor, does that refer to conditional uses as opposed to special exception?
Correct.
No, that's, but the special exception refers to that section. So, yes, it's both.
And with-
And, and, and under 806G, it also talks about traffic generation.
And with regard to that.
Same, same thing.
With regard to that, does it reference in your ordinance with regard to any HOP or applications to the Pennsylvania-
Talks, talks about, will not clearly be in conflict with other city ordinance or state or federal law regulations, so yes.
State or regulations.
Yes.
Has the applicant disclosed to you what his intentions are for the other building?
No.
You've not taken that into account in your calculations with regards to traffic, traffic activity, correct?
It was included as a single-family residential, because that's what it's being used for, I believe, presently.
You believe the Memelo property will be used for a single-family residence, correct?
It's not, it's not part of the application for the drug facility.
I didn't ask that. Your understanding is it's being used as a single family?
I don't know if it's being used as a single family. I stand corrected. I just know that it's not being-
What's it being used for?
I don't know, unless I go into the property.
Fair enough. You haven't done that, right?
No, I haven't gone into it.
Thank you. Um, you gave some testimony with regards to parking arrangements at Clearbrook, correct?
No.
You didn't?
I, what I said at Clearbrook was from prior testimony from Mr. Conneboy. In his experience, very few people ever bring vehicles, and in his experience, he had one instance over a period of 19 years where somebody had a vehicle that were a patient that lived there. He's going to be involved in this project, and he foresees the same type of lack of vehicles on the part of residents coming there to be commonplace.
Is Clearbrook a fair comparison?
I'm sorry.
Is Clearbook, Clearbrook a fair comparison for the use?
Yeah, it does have a non-hospital, it, it has two components. It has a detox component, and it also has the facility that we're talking about, the residential component.
Because I heard Mr. Conneboy talk about the planning commission, about how there's nothing like this in northeastern Pennsylvania. Is there something like this?
I couldn't say. I, I don't have that degree of expertise.
Um, with regards to the hours, you, you spent a lot of time, and the members asked you some questions. Apparently, in their duties, part of their obligation and things to consider are the hours of operation, correct?
That's correct.
Because-
I'm going to object. I wasn't allowed to ask anything with regard to hours based on what they placed into evidence.
We already, I already covered that.
Yeah. So I, and you abstain. It was his objection, so now he's going into it, and I wasn't allowed to.
No, I think, I think it was very clear what his testimony was, his hours of operation.
So there's gonna be people that work there during the day, correct?
That's correct.
Some of those people, are they gonna leave at some point in time?
Yes, I presume that to be true.
And then there's gonna be some people that continue to reside there, correct?
Correct.
And there's gonna be some people that aren't working, they're- What are the hours of those shifts going to be?
I think they were provided previously in terms of the different shift schedule, and I could get that again off Mr. Conneboy. I think he submitted that in his original testimony back in April, he gave those shifts. So without me having it in front of me, and to read it to you-
And that's fair enough. I'm just asking you, as the expert offering the opinion here tonight with regards to hours, and the fair answer to you is you're not sure. You're not sure.
Well, I could tell you this, the hours of operation for this facility will conform with the hours of operation and restrictions that apply to Geisinger Medical Clinic, which was zero.
There were no restrictions? Let's talk about that.
There was no, there was no-
What was, tell me, what was the traffic count? The actual traffic count? Not based upon the suspected use? What was the actual traffic count for Geisinger?
I don't know, because unless they had it out on the highway or on their property and provided it to us, we can only go by documentation in terms of manuals and reports.
Who did you talk to at Geisinger to get that information?
I talked, I didn't, I used the traffic manual, which I referred to earlier, because Geisinger, when I got involved with the project, was no longer in use.
So the answer is, who did you talk to when you asked at Geisinger about the traffic count?
I did not talk to anybody at Geisinger.
Thank you. Who did you talk to at Geisinger about what the use was in 1993?
I based it on the variance application that was provided tonight.
So with regards to the actual use of the property, what information do you have?
With the actual use of the property, I have the variance that was granted in 1986, which indicated a medical clinic for thirty doctors, a pharmacy, a lab, off-street parking that was more than sufficient or adequate for their needs, and also noted the fact that there were no restrictions on the hours of operation, nor were there any restrictions on whether or not anybody stayed overnight as a patient at that as a clinic.
I, I've heard that now three times. My simple question, I'm just trying to understand the basis for your opinion with regards to actual information as opposed to projections or assumptions. I want to know, how many patients were using that facility after 1993?
I'm going to object. I believe it's asked and answered. He testified that he's basing it on accept, what PennDOT accepts as the calculations for this facility. I think it's asked and answered.
He didn't do an actual study based upon the charts that-
Well, I've been asking about the traffic count. I'm asking about the number of people that actually worked there. I mean-
And I don't think he talked, I think he answered that he didn't talk to anybody from Geisinger.
Well, okay, so my next question would be, does he know how many people worked there in 1993?
I could tell you-
If I'm not allowed-
I'll allow that question. Go ahead.
The only thing I could tell you, it's talked about thirty doctors, a pharmacy, and a lab. So it, I can't give you a number, but if you calculate that out and assume thirty doctors and two patients a day, pharmacy, but I can't give you a documented information from Geisinger because that doesn't exist.
I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be argumentative, okay? You know I'm not the one seeking the special exception, okay? So my understanding is, you're supposed to provide us with information regarding the actual use. And my simple question is, and I don't-
I object to that categorization.
Do you have any information regarding the actual use, actual car count, actual number of employees, actual anything after 1993 with regards to the Geisinger activity?
I have-
If I can.
I think he's answered what he's going to answer.
I have the impul-
He doesn't know.
No, was that answered?
He's basing it on thirty doctors.
Okay.
I think we could all figure out how many, how much traffic thirty doctors are going to generate.
If there were thirty doctors?
If there were. There could have been.
We don't know.
We don't know.
But that's what they were approved for.
That's what they were approved for, though.
Oh.
Go on.
Or working on a nonconforming use.
Go on.
So, now, sir, with regards to, I feel like I got distracted, and I apologize. I know I aggravated Mr. Jones with it.
No, take your time, get your thoughts.
So, activities, we switched to the memelo property, we've covered that. With regards to this particular use, and Mr. Jones is going to give whatever conditions might come up, when you factored in the traffic count, you limited that to the operation of the residential facility based upon the information that's been given to you of thirty people staying there and approximately eleven employees, correct?
That's correct.
Anything beyond that, you haven't calculated, correct?
That's all I needed.